All right, this time I would like to call the order of the Hardin County Board of Education meeting. But thank you all for coming out here tonight. And first of all, we'll do the pledge to the flag. Bill Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And number two is, three is board commitments. And Ms. Johnson, you got those?
I've got them. To improve our effectiveness, the Hardin County Schools Board team commits to keep children first, listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district and support district goals and support board decisions.
All right, thank you. And recognitions, and Mr. John Wright usually handles that for us.
Yes, sir. We have our Stronger and HCS Stronger Together awards. Tonight, Mr. Chairman, we have four wonderful folks to receive those awards. So if you'll pass that resolution, sir, we'll start that process.
All right. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post motion carries.
Lindsey DeValle, are you here? Come on up here, Ms. Lindsey. This is Lindsey DeValle. She is an eighth grade student at West Hardin Middle School. Ms. Lindsey, Mr. Johnson, give them your award. And we're going to talk a little bit about Lindsey here. This is from our assistant principal, Ms. Swords. She is a top-notch student who always participates and is a leader among her peers. She is always eager to work with other students. Lindsey recently won first place, or she earned first place, in the Kentucky Saves Week video contest. Kentucky Saves Week is a financial literacy awareness initiative. She recently wrote appreciation letters to local veterans. She is part of West Hardin's Elite Fitness Club and the Schools Beta Club. Outside of school, she volunteers at Feeding America and helps her grandmother clean houses for the elderly in our community. Thank you, Lindsey. From.
She have some parents with her?
Yeah, mom.
Mom, all right, thank you.
Thank you all for coming. We appreciate you all. Okay, Ms. Dow and Ms. Alford, come on up. This is Kristen Dow and Laura Alford. They are both instructors at the Hardin County Schools Early College and Career Center. And Mr. Robbins has shared this with me, that they go above and beyond to help students be successful in their classroom. They help students above, to go above and beyond in their classroom to be successful and in their personal lives. Mrs. Dow spends several hours of her own time to connect and counsel the students that may have personal issues. Just recently, Mrs. Alford helped a student that was in need of food for herself and her siblings. E.C. three Principal Robbins said that with hiring teachers, we look for certain characteristics that accentuate how well teachers connect with students. Mrs. Dow and Mrs. Alford are wonderful and make true personal connections with our students that go beyond the classroom. Thank you all very much. Thank you, thank you ladies. Next is Mr. Mark Jarvis. And Mark, we brought his family with him tonight, so we thank him for doing that.
Mr. Jarvis is a meteorologist at the National Weather Service. He is a longstanding partner of Hardin County Schools. When Mrs. Morgan and HCS Transportation Director Chris Quarter have countless conversations about the status of a particular school day in correlation to a weather event, either one or both have consulted with Mr. Jarvis. His consultation, guidance and patience are assets in helping our administrators keep students safe. He is dependable, accurate and realistic in his guidance, is always right on target. And we are thankful that he is literally a phone call away when we need him and need him and his forecasting skills. So thank you, Mr. Jarvis. We appreciate it. Ms. Morgan, you may have, you talk a lot to Mr. Jarvis.
I do. Just parents, he works for the National Weather Service in Louisville, so when you hear that severe thunderstorm warning come across or tornado warning that's coming from there. But we always like to know the timing of events to realize if it's going to be an easy decision or a very difficult decision. So he may regret the day his wife, who works for us as a speech pathologist, gave me his cell number, but he always responds to it anyway. So and all three of their students attend Longview Elementary and J.T. Elton and North Hardin High School. So we appreciate you all being here with us. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
My job is done, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, that takes us down to focus on academics. And Mr. Sutton, have anything there for us tonight? He's a dual-purpose photographer and...
Are we ready now?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, tonight, we're focused on some foundational skills. And this is what we put together as a focus for our district. And what we're going to be talking to you all about tonight is right up here on this side. We're focused on the reading component. We always say there's five components to a good reading program. You've got phonemic awareness, you've got phonics, vocab, fluency and comprehension. Those five pieces are the components we look at whenever we develop our reading programs. That's what we monitor as a district. And you always heard that statement, you know, if you want to go fast, you go alone. If you want to go far, you go together, that kind of thing. So we've actually got all 13 elementary schools focusing on these components of a reading program. And it took us a few years to get our focus in where we wanted to go, but I can say today that we have accomplished our goal and all the schools moving in the same direction. So that's been a huge accomplishment. Now you're going to say, well, what are sight words down here? Those are things that we practice to help us learn how to read. And then we have a reading council program or accelerated read where they actually read books, take tests and demonstrate comprehension. But of the component that we're focused on here tonight is going to be fluency. So we want to show you the process, how our students go about practicing fluency during the classroom. So I've got our Director of Elementary Curriculum here tonight, Miss Stacy Bronner. And she's got some data she's going to want to show you tonight. And we're also going to show you a video of a teacher making fluency in class. So I can give you all some data here. I can see that we have stayed working very diligently this year, even throughout the pandemic, to make sure we're focusing on these foundational skills, holding every teacher or student accountable for this process. So proud of our principals, so proud of our teachers for continuing these processes with all the challenges they've had this year. Stacy, go ahead.
Okay, so to give you a little bit of information about what we do as fluency, our teachers teach fluency every day. But as a district, we administer three fluency reads throughout the year. One's in the fall, one's in the winter and one in springtime. And we have these dates set at the beginning of the school year, so each school knows what time of the year we're going to ask for these district reads or passages that we give to schools. So once the reads are sent out to the schools, the teachers administer individually the reads for the students and record the data that they receive off the students. We have created, we have a fluency drive that has all the information that teachers would need. And there's a score, it's just like a data sheet that we keep in there. And so once a teacher administers the read, she plugs in the score of each child. They are color-coded. So once they give the read, the teacher will know whether the student is below grade level, on grade level or above grade level. So we take that data, once the teachers complete those sheets and send them in, we create the school level sheet, the data sheet. So we break it down and we put all of the teachers in and then we'll give them the grade level overall for their schools and a school overall score. Then we take the school overall score and we create a district result, which we have tonight, so that you can see what our overall scores are. And then what we do with these scores, or the information the teachers gain from this, these district reads, is they talk about this information in our PLCs that we have. So they will take a look at their classroom data and see, you know, who's struggling, what do we need to do? And so they can have some conversations about the data for the reads that they have. Let me see, we've just done our, we've just finished up our winter read, which you have the fall and the winter. We'll be doing our next read May 3rd. That's when it'll be due, so that we'll have our spring scores. So let's see, what else? Is there anything else you can think of, Mr. Sutton?
No, just overall, proud of our scores. I want you to look at the number, the number of students that we've assessed in the area of fluency. When I say, if you were to ask me, Mr. Sutton, what did fluency look like in this district two years ago, I would have said we were about half in, half out. Okay? It's like, well, is fluency an important part of the reading process? We at Hardin County Schools and the folks are saying, yes, it's a component of a good reading program. And if we're saying that's an important part of our reading program, then we're all going to do it. And that's why I say you got to give credit to the principals, credit to the teachers for implementation, credit for evaluating the data, credit for understanding the students that are reading below grade level, make sure they have weekly fluency reads in the classroom. And the teacher buy-in has been unbelievable. And we want to show you a video here tonight of one of our outstanding teachers, Ms. Gonzalez, at Middleview Elementary School.
One thing I want to add, we do our fluency reads for grades one through five. Kindergarten does not do the fluency reads. And we start the first grade reads in winter. And those students that get that first grade read have to meet a certain criteria. They will know list A of the Orton-Gillingham sight words that we have. And they have to have mastered the NG, the NK and the ED syllable. And once they do that, then they will be ready for the fluency read.
And before we show you this video, you're going to notice in the data, you're going to say, well, how come so many more kids were assessed in the, you know, the winter rather than the fall? So can you explain that?
Because of the first grade. We did not test our first grade students in the fall. And then we tested the first grade students who were, that met the criteria for the winter read.
So we have about 700 kids in first grade then, look like? 700 and 1,000, somewhere in there. They're prepared. You have to meet certain criteria. Yeah, right. Based on your phonics and phonemic awareness continuum, so you can really do the fluency. So not every kid qualifies at that point, even winter of first grade, which is very detailed. So let's see if I can find our video. I think I've lost it here.
Reading fluency is the ability to read accurately at a natural pace that is not too slow, not too fast, using correct phrasing and expression. And reading fluency is important because it leads directly to good reading comprehension. So a student who can read fluently is able to focus more on understanding the text that they're reading rather than just trying to read word by word. Reading fluency is assessed by listening to and recording how many words a student can read correctly in one minute. When I assess a student's reading fluency, I remind them that the goal is not to finish the passage in one minute, but that they should read at a natural pace, which is not too fast, not too slow, and then also with expression. As the student reads, I follow along and mark any words they read incorrectly, add or may leave out. If the student doesn't know the word, I count to three in my head and then tell the student the word so that they can move on. And if the student self-corrects, I make a note of that and it doesn't count against their word per minute. After one minute, I mark the last word that the student read, record the word count at that point, and then subtract the number of words missed to get the words per minute. Our district uses the DIBELS Oral Fluency Scale to set word per minute benchmarks for the beginning, middle and end of each grade level. For example, a third grader should be reading 78 words per minute at the beginning of the school year. There are many ways to teach reading fluency to students. First of all, we need to teach them what fluency is and why it's important. And also, it's important to tell parents what reading fluency is and why it's important. That way you can get them on board too. Another way to teach reading fluency is to read aloud to students as often as possible so that you can model fluent reading to them. And then also to do the occasional think aloud to give them your fluency tips as well. Paired readings, where partners read together and reader theater scripts are also a great way to develop fluency. Echo reading is a great way to develop pacing and expression. Choral reading, where everyone reads together at the same time, is also another good way to develop natural pacing and also to practice expression. Another way is to do repeated readings. So a student might begin a passage on one day and then practice it throughout the week and also keep track of how many words they're gaining each time. And finally, practice, practice and more practice. And it's also important to have students practice reading fluency with a text that is on their level, so not something that's too hard, but then not something that is too easy either. So reading fluency is really important in making the transition from learning to read to reading to learn. So students who have good reading fluency can focus more on comprehension instead of just reading that word by word.
Challenge, and I challenge this to everybody, is people always say, man, I struggle with homework at times. It can be a very time-consuming process. But when you send home this reading passage, fluency passage home with a kid, we're talking about one minute a night. You're talking about 60 seconds of practicing that same passage, okay? That repeated exposure to something where the kid can gain confidence. So I think when parents kind of found out, you need how much time? 60 seconds? Yeah, I can do that. Instead of sitting there for three hours. So we're asking a little, but I think we'll get a lot. So it's a huge process for us, going well. We've got to change some things next year, but if you see a first grader doing a passage in the fall, they're all doing the same passage at every school. So nobody has any advantage one way or the other. Any questions on that process? We're pretty excited.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
The details, like, we don't, lots of times we don't get to see how it goes, how it works. So.
So have you all, do you have a breakdown, any type of breakdown? It's the student that's been totally online versus the others in this?
I don't think we have the data for that totally, Stacy.
We have OLAA classrooms.
We do.
Those teachers did complete the winter read, so we do have those that we can look at.
So that's going to show up somewhere probably in the next school year starting of it. There'll be data that...
Yes, we can compare those to our in-person.
But the OLAA did not do the fall because our process is, you know, coming things together. They were not prepared for that in the fall, but they did in the winter.
You know, of course, it's been a trying year for everyone, but the students that have had to depend upon totally online, if the parents, or any student, the one that comes traditionally to school, if that parent does not help just a little bit.
Just ask them for a little.
Just a little bit, like you said, that one minute is a whole lot for some of them.
We'll provide the passage, we'll provide the send it home to them, the 60 seconds repeated exposure, read to them, read with them. It's a huge benefit for us.
Very important.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, that takes us down to recognition of visitors. And we have one person that has signed up that would like to speak about graduation, I believe, Shanna Boy. Do you want to come up to the podium? We'd be glad to listen to your concerns.
Okay, can everybody hear me with my mask? Okay.
It might be better, I'm sorry, it might be better if you took the mask off.
Okay, are you sure?
Yeah.
It's a little tight on me, so it doesn't fall off.
Mr. Wright will come wipe everything.
Okay.
And you rode together in the same car, so you three are...
Yes. So everybody knows me. I'm not used to talking in front of anybody, presenters, so this is really out of my comfort zone. But this is important to all the seniors, or at least most of them. We know how tough it has been on everybody to, you know, to school principals, administrators to figure out different ways to keep our students safe, keep our teachers safe and everything around in schools. But we just think that there is some ways to have a normal graduation that is not only, you know, safe, but also beneficial to us seniors, so we can have a normal last year of school, before college and before starting a career. So you stated, Ms. Morgan, in your video, that social distancing will still cure. But past that, you kind of stated how in classrooms, there wouldn't be but maybe three feet of space in a classroom, so the major COVID-19 protocols won't be followed. So we are asking for a normal graduation that has six feet apart social distancing, has masks required, temperature checks at the entry, and can also be, make sure that, you know, hand sanitizer can be given, make sure we have enough space for everybody to social distance, families, friends. We just want to walk the stage with our friends instead of having to invite them to a normal appointment time. So we would rather, you know, use those tickets for our families, because a lot of us has a lot of family members that we would like to show up as well. We are also thinking about how around in the community, businesses and restaurants and, you know, airplanes, airports, there are many people that sit side by side with masks on, with some Clorox wipes or something that can, you know, help, help the spread of COVID. But however, it's something that we can try to take into consideration whenever we have a normal graduation. So other than that, you know, you said also in your video that, you know, you guys are starting with elementary students to go back to school first, which is okay, that their years are incredibly important. And I think that as well, but I also think seniors are also important, especially our last year, so we can have normal graduation, a normal prom too, just to make sure that, you know, we can have masks required and, you know, you guys can bring a date. I know for some instances, there's some contact tracing issues. And I feel like with schools doing contact tracing on pieces of paper, with football games, basketball games, banned opportunities, I feel like there would be a better way to have other people from other schools come, even to graduation too, as long as we make them wear masks, make them check their temperatures and just do the COVID-19 protocols. We think that, you know, if you guys can allow, you know, 1,000-plus kids in a high school back to school with, you know, not really social distancing in the classroom or common areas, which I know is hard, you know, of course, in a school. But we feel like if that can happen for the last couple of weeks of school, we feel like a graduation, a normal graduation would be best for us seniors. I know that, you know, it's a hard decision. I know in a lot of people, it's hard for them to figure out a way to make it safe. But I know a lot of seniors, you know, including these two that came with me, we've, you know, we've spread the word around, you know, we have petitions going that has had, you know, over 140 signatures, you know. Some seniors couldn't make it today because of work. I left work at 5:30 to come be here to speak. That's how passionate I am about it. Very nervous, but I'm making it through it. But I mean, we just hope that you guys take it into consideration. Think about all the, you know, the people that could volunteer, you know, squirt some hand sanitizer on a hand through entry, make sure people are wearing masks the whole time, make sure, you know, I can take a, you know, ruler to do six feet apart, you know, just to make sure that, you know, people are distanced and safe. So we hope that you guys take that into consideration. I know it's very difficult, but we'd appreciate if you guys would think about it.
All right, what school are you from?
I'm from North Hardin.
Oh, good.
North Hardin High School. And I'm doing this on like behalf of basically all the seniors in Hardin County. I know that a lot of other counties are also doing a normal graduation. For instance, Mead County, Owen County, Warren County, Bullock County, Logan County. So a lot of different counties are doing this. And I feel like honestly, it'd be kind of the safest, just in, you know, with the temperatures, the masks, everything that I said before. I feel like it'd be really, you know, safe for all of us. Parents would be happy to just, you know, watch their kids walk the stage. You know, we've worked 12 years for this. I know last year was different because COVID was way worse. But, you know, 20 per 100,000 kids, you know, that I heard from Ms. Morgan, I feel like, you know, with a graduation, if it's social distance, it'd be, it'd be okay. I'm also not an adult, but I feel like if we take the precautions, I think everything will be okay. And I'd be happy to volunteer, and I know they would too, and other seniors who would be here to support, or I've signed the petition, I know they would volunteer to help as well. So.
Well, I want to tell you something, you've done an excellent job tonight.
Thank you.
For polite and...
I was like a little prepared. I didn't come in with a PowerPoint like Mr. Sutton. I wasn't that prepared, but I tried.
Thank you for that.
I was like, I have my paper. My mom's like, I don't know if you can read that. Like, I don't see it. I'm like, I just wrote all my notes down.
Very, very respectful, but...
Thank you.
We met with all three principals. Mr. Isaacs is back here, the high school principals today. And we have some guidelines that we have to go by, which we are pushing it to the max of what we can do right now. Now hopefully, the plan is, and Mr. Isaacs and all of them made us aware today, that, you know, we can always go up. We don't want to get so high that we have to take away. But we are going to try our best to have the best possible allowed graduation that the guidelines will allow us to have for you all.
Yes.
But I do respect you. I understand where you're at. You've spent 12 years in school and you want to celebrate. That's great. And you've done well.
Thank you.
If all of the group were as well-mannered as you three, we could have anything we wanted anywhere.
Hell, I wish that was like that too, okay? Like, I would get a skating rink, like, I understand. No, like, we're very appreciative that, you know, we're at least getting a graduation. You know, unlike last year, there was cars, you know, drive-bys and everything. You know, we, you know, with COVID being not as worse, we figured just a normal stage graduation with our family and friends would be, you know, nice to have. We are appreciative. We just kind of are asking a little bit, a little bit more, if possible. So we just want you guys to consider it, and that's why I came here today to kind of talk to you guys about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Never stop.
You're welcome.
And never stop asking for what you want.
Yes, that's why, like, I'm not used to this. Like, all 12 years of school, they know me, they know, I do not talk in class. Like, I sit there, I make a 4.0 GPA, I do my work, that's all I do. So I'm like, this is not something I do is talk in front of people, but I figured this is something that I, it's now my time.
Excellent job.
Well, thank you.
And just to be clear, we don't know how much we can do yet.
Yes.
We will try, okay?
Yes, for sure.
But we don't know how much it can be. Right now, the, we're limited based on guidance from KDE. So we're, but we're looking for how other places are able to do it and what we can do and...
Yes, and I appreciate that. And I appreciate you guys listening to me tonight and also taking it all in consideration as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Doesn't it make it hard not to give them what they want?
Yes, it does.
Very professional. What most people in our community, they don't, never get the opportunity to witness what took place right there. It's wonderful.
I just, I do have a clarification of that characterization there that I think is worth correcting. The, we are following the CDC guidelines, even with the three feet, because the six feet is when practical, when possible, as much as is possible. They'd like to see three feet when you can't do six feet. But that is still according to guideline.
Yes, sir. All right, construction updates. We don't have anyone here to tell us too much about that tonight. I think we even let John slide out tonight, didn't we?
Well, and John wanted to know if he could slide out early. His daughter is playing in the district tournament tonight.
Absolutely.
Let him know that family first and to go watch that game in a month. Nobody will remember that he wasn't here, but if he misses a three-point shot, he'll remember for months that he wasn't there, so.
And she may never forget.
And 30 years later, they'll say, you wasn't there, Ted. But we did tour the new East Hardin School today, all the board members after our meeting this morning, and things are progressing along. But that opening of that building is going to be for our next year's students. So we're at a point that there's no use of putting pressure or pushing any harder. These guys have fought a lot of elements. We've had COVID all year for them. They've had mud, they've had weather that wasn't suitable. So we, we got a really nice product coming along out there and it's just, it's just not going to happen this year. I know probably some of the students wanted to be the first graduating class from there, but sort of like COVID, we didn't want it either. So we, we got it all, all in the same year. But we, we're on schedule and it looks like construction prices are really going to escalate because materials are getting hard to find. We're getting ready to start the bidding process for central Hardin renovation and who knows where we're going to be because steel prices are just skyrocketing. So we'll keep you updated on that again next month. We're down to consideration of consent agenda. And we're, it's somewhat normal here. We'll pull out a few things and talk about them. Some, we're approving some of the clubs to travel as CDC guidelines approve through the summer months and into next year. And we've had an update on resource officers. Student accident insurance, I think if we approve a... I think if we approve a consent agenda tonight, we're approving purchasing student accident insurance for all students.
That actually, I think we vote on that next month.
Next month, okay.
Yes.
We discussed it today, so I think if something drastically changes, we're going to support that again. And so we have to have the insurance for the athletes. And what did we come up with? Steve, it was $4.60 or something like that?
$4.50.
$4.60 a person, I think is what the cost was. So that's something that we feel like is important to have and pay just for, pay it for all of our students. And then if they're in a bed accident or something where their main insurance don't cover, it provides a little bit of relief for those students also. And we also are going to approve a $1,000 contribution for our project graduation at the three high schools. So we've bumped that up. $1,000 is not a whole lot, but it's twice as much as $500. So that's what we've been doing, was $500 a year. We're going to bump it up to $1,000 for those students and try to have some nicer things for them to help out in those areas. And...
We probably should talk about the B4, approval of amendment to the calendar.
Yes, sir. Tell us what they've done on that year.
Yeah, I remember that. Oaks Day, what we're doing is Oaks Day will now be used as, well...
Instructional day.
Instructional day, yes. Whereas we had planned that it would be a non-instructional day, now it's an instructional day.
I think that part of the fact of that was, we would be having school released on Monday. And if we use Oaks Day, I don't think there's going to be tickets available for the people that like to attend the Oaks. So we might as well capture that day back into our traditional, our online instruction. And we won't have, on Friday, when school's out, the kids don't have to worry about getting up on Monday morning.
Then people don't have to come back Monday.
May 21st, yeah.
And of course, the teachers, it's still a day for the teachers, the 21st is, but...
Now, of course, our weatherman left, but we could have another snow between now and then.
Anything can happen in March.
That's right.
That is true. But it looks like we might get through.
Yeah. That's the only one I saw.
Yeah, that's the main thing.
And we will send a letter out to parents, letting them know that. Make sure we post on social media after you all approve that tonight to let families know. This gives them over month to plan for that.
And that action item, that's, it's not ending.
Yeah.
On changing the call system. All right, anything, anyone want to elaborate on anything or pull anything out or...
Do you want a motion to approve the decision?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
A motion to approve, I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, second to five, I would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion.